If you take roll call.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Combs?
Here.
Mr. Luther?
Present.
Ms. Nelson?
Present.
Ms. Reclu?
Present.
Ms. Sebacher?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Present.
Mr. Washington?
Here.
Mr. West?
Here.
Eight council members present.
Thank you. And Pastor Williamson is here to do our invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Join us.
Let us pray together. Our Heavenly Father, we rejoice to give you thanks for such a beautiful day in the heartland as we've enjoyed this day, remembering that in many parts of our country, folks are still recovering from storms, tornadoes, floods, and in some areas bitter snow and ice storms and very cold weather. Spring's just around our corner now. Tomorrow being the first day of March, we've had a good winter. But for those struggling tonight and tomorrow trying to get their lives restored, we pray your blessings on each and every one. We thank you, Lord, for those that serve this city. I want to be faithful, Lord, to thank you for those willing to cover the bases for us as citizens, helping us, Lord, to enjoy the quality of life that we enjoy each day. And for those that have come from the community tonight to be recognized and to participate in this session, I am so proud when folks come from the community to share in local government. That makes us all better and stronger. I ask you to bless our administrators, our council persons, all those, Lord, that serve on boards and commissions, and every employee that wears the emblem of this city. I pray, Lord, thanking you for their service and for the prosperity that we are blessed with because of it. I pray for this session tonight and for any work that's done or discussions that are held, that first they be pleasing to you. I pray for anyone within our city family that is bereaved, sick, afflicted, or struggles in any way, that the God of all comfort be with them to strengthen them and renew their life and their joy and purpose. Thank you, Lord, for hearing our prayers as a unified body. We pray this all through Christ our Lord. Amen. Face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Praise the Lord.
Okay, at this time, we're going to do a proclamation recognizing Black History Month, and I would invite, uh, we have representatives here from our Human Rights Commission as well as NAACP, if you would all join me at the podium. Thank you all for coming tonight. It's wonderful to see a good crowd for this. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment of Negro History Week in nineteen twenty-six by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas Black History Week was expanded in nineteen seventy-six as part of the nation's bicentennial celebration and thereby became established as Black History Month and is now celebrated all over North America. And whereas the Fulton NAACP has worked to illuminate the history and contributions of African Americans nationally and locally via teaching from textbooks, oration, and celebration to promote awareness and appreciation. And whereas the Fulton NAACP endorses the celebration of Black History Month as a positive way of recognizing the culture and history of African Americans as vital to the core beliefs and values of this society. And whereas the City of Fulton continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the coun- country, and the world. And thou now therefore, as Mayor of the City of Fulton, I do hereby proclaim February twenty twenty-three as Black History Month and recognize the efforts of the Fulton NAACP in its mission to encourage all citizens to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous prosperous for us all. Thank you very much. Would you all would join me around here? Would you all mind stepping around here and get a picture? Would you mind turning around and and we'll get a picture of everybody?
I'm not going to take a picture.
Doesn't count. We don't get a picture of it. Okay, that was, uh, really nice to see a a good representation from our citizens tonight for that. Yep. Um, at this time, we have comments from visitors. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. Uh, come to the podium, uh, give us your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes or less, please. And seeing no one come forward, we'll move right along. Uh, approval of the count, uh, consent agenda. Council members may choose to remove an item for discussion prior to approving the agenda. Uh, tonight, we have four items. The, uh, City Council meeting minutes of January tenth, January nineteenth, January twenty-fourth, and February fourteenth, all of twenty twenty-three. And I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Very good. Thank you. We'll move right along. Um, tonight, we have our acceptance for the January, uh, DOA report. And you've all been given that, given some time to read that. And I would entertain any questions. And then one night we pull it off, no one has questions.
Move for acceptance of the January Director of Administration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
One discussion, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have had some feedback from some constituents that, uh, maybe we look at a routine of going a brief summary of the the DOA report for awareness items for the community so they can understand what's going on a little more on the Director's report. So it might be something at least discussed further in the future once the DOA is present.
That, yeah, that might be, that might be something we can talk about. I don't know, it'd be tough to give a overview.
Yeah.
It'd be pretty lengthy.
Something, yeah. We can talk outside of here and see if there's somewhere we can handle that.
Yep, absolutely. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, next up, we have our presentation and acceptance of the January financial. And we've been given a copy of that. Oh, Candy's coming up.
I don't have to.
No, no. We appreciate it.
Candy Johnson Finance. I don't know if you can hear me. I'm hoping this is a little more informative than the last couple we've had, so. We have recorded twelve months of sales tax in two thousand twenty-two. Collections are at four percent, which is approximately hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars from fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. No sales tax was recorded in January, and that's typical. Um, use taxes up twelve point four percent, approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars from the prior fiscal year. There were two and a half weeks of payroll in January, one week of the first payroll cycle, and January was accrued back to two thousand and twenty-two. So salaries are a little higher. Other than that, it's business as usual. If you have any questions or...
I would just like to say thanks for, um, presenting a little bit more information to us. I think that's wonderful. Yes.
And I just want to say thank you for the work that you're doing. I know it's a lot. You took on a lot, so we appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Andy, you said that we ended twenty twenty-two at four percent higher than last year?
Um, yeah, on the sales tax.
Sales tax. Okay, thank you.
All righty.
I move for acceptance of the financials for January.
Second.
All right, any questions, comments? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? Okay, we're clicking right along here. New business, we have a request from David Beaver for our annual Independence Day Parade. Uh, that'll be held July fourth, um, at eleven AM on Court Street. Uh, the request has been reviewed by Chief Ladwig and administration. Some police assistance will be needed as usual, but that's been, um, talked about, I believe. And you've all got a copy of the letter that that, uh, David sent us. Are there any questions or concerns about this?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the request for the parade on July the fourth.
Second. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And we appreciate the, um, the cooperation of of our police. Uh, is there any concerns from you chief or? We're moving too fast. I gotta slow things down. I'm sorry.
Bill Ladwig, Chief of Police. No, no concerns at all. Mr. Beaver does a great job with, uh, organizing this parade, and we are more than happy to help because it's a great, uh, opportunity for citizens to come out on the holiday. We're we're fortunate to be a part of it.
Very good. Yep. And it seems to to get bigger and better every year, so, yep. All righty. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? All right, thank you. Next up, we have representatives here from our South Callaway Band Booster Club, and they have something special to tell us about here. If you would move the mic closer. I'm sorry, I had that moved around.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I'm Heather Murphy. I'm the Band Boosters President from South Callaway.
And I'm Dustin Hall, and I'm the Director of Bands at South Callaway. So, um, we have been nominated by, uh, Sen- former Senator Roy Blunt to represent the state of Missouri at the twenty twenty-three National Memorial Day Parade, which is coming up very quickly, so.
And we are the only band from Missouri that will be doing that, from the entire state. That being said, it's very expensive. We just took the kids to the Alamo Bowl a year and a half ago to compete there and perform, and then very shortly before we left on that trip, we received the nomination. So we've had to turn around and come up with another over fifty thousand in eighteen months. So we are asking for some financial support. I think you guys all got a copy of the letter, maybe? I know somebody did. I don't know if they gave you all a copy. Okay.
Is there any questions?
What?
We we perform on on Memorial Day this in May, yeah. And it'll be, um, on the Armed Forces Network, so televised.
It'll go around the world to the Pentagon, or to the military.
Military, yeah.
For our benefit and the people listening, when do you need donations by? When do you, you can't wait until that day to receive them? What's?
Our deadline to turn in our final check is April the first. So if we could have it before that, that would be really great.
We're one month away.
We are one month away.
And I'll give my two cents, I guess. When I first saw this, um, my my reaction was, well, if we if we donate to this, where do we stop? How, you know, how would we say yes to you and no to the next person that comes along? Uh, because we have, uh, senior nights, we have all those different activities that that they need money too. So, um, I I I have some concern about about it, although it is something special and it is a little bit unique and different, and and that I think gives us a a little bit of leeway to do something there, but, uh, but that's up to our council.
And that is why we went ahead and accepted the nomination too, because that is a once in a lifetime thing. There's a lot of Alamo Bowls and a lot of parades, but this is kind of the only time this is probably going to happen.
There we go. Um, I'm proud of him. When I read, first read it, I was just so proud of you guys, you know, and this is wonderful opportunity for you, and it is very once in a lifetime. So I just, I'm so proud of you.
We do want to add in that our kids won their very first ever state championship for their marching band last year. And that was even after they received the nomination, so that's.
We're having a good year.
We're having a good year.
Look, could you go, go ahead, Brad. I was just, I I fully recognize that we're not, as a city, we're not able to make a donation directly to you in terms of monetary. But I believe anything that we can do in the next month to assist, promote, if you need to do a fundraiser on city property, if you need a flyer put on City Hall, if you need, I think anything else but writing a check, we'd be happy to do for the South Callaway Band in the next month.
So we did do a Give Back Night with Ohana's, um, two weeks ago? Something like that?
Yeah.
Something like that. Um, and then March eighteenth, we are doing a Give Back Day with GoCo. We are getting twenty percent of their sales from the day as a support for us, so we can definitely get that flyer to, who do I get that to? You can give that to our city clerk, Kathy. Okay, I will do that.
Yeah, I was just gonna add that, uh, to your point, that means it's definitely a good platform to also help promote this. You're kind of going into the donation aspect of, you know, do by April first. Can you explain more of maybe different ways to reach out for donations? If they don't have the flyer, I mean, people may be viewing remotely on the internet, so.
We are really, really active on our Facebook page. We have a Band Boosters Facebook page that we try to share fun stuff our kids are doing, daily stuff the band is doing, um, fundraisers that we are doing.
About South Callaway Band Boosters.
How do people donate?
How do they donate? Um, we actually have a Square link, we have a Venmo, and they can certainly cut us a check. The information to send the check to is on the letter that I think you said you guys all got a copy of. A lot of our local businesses have donated to the last trip and this one. We've gone on two trips now in eighteen months. This one, of course, being a special occasion that we didn't really plan for, but we couldn't turn down, and that's totaled over a hundred thousand dollars. So in the last eighteen months, we've had to come up with over fifty thousand of that, so.
So if we have people that are listening that are interested in donating, do they call the school? Do they call you?
They would call us. Um, checking our Facebook page is probably the best way to get in touch with us. They can send us a message because that way anybody that's on the board can respond quickly. Otherwise, they can call me or text me, and I can give you my number. It, do you need it now, or?
I would just make it public, because there's a lot of us that don't do Facebook.
Yeah.
Um, are off of Facebook because of Lent, because our children made us. And and so, you know, I just know that there's a lot of people that aren't on social media and that would probably really be interested in donating. I mean, I'm sure every penny helps, so.
It does. We absolutely.
Individual that wants to donate that's South Callaway alum, woo woo, go see.
I was gonna say, I sat here and counted how many of you there are because you all graduated within a couple years of me.
There's at least fifty percent of us. That's exactly right. And so, you know, I just want everybody, every penny counts, so whoever wants to donate, you know, we want to make sure they have that information.
Yep, and we will get that out to Kathy too, the flyer about GoCo.
So you, so the number.
Okay, so if they need to text me or call me, it's five seven three two three zero two zero nine nine. And this is a volunteer thing, so I do work a full-time job, so I can get back to anybody if I don't answer.
Leave a message.
This is a full-time job, but I don't get paid for this one.
You might give them.
We do. We have a Venmo link and a Square link. Those are on our Facebook page, and we can certainly text and email those out to anybody. I don't have the addresses with me, but we can email those out or text them.
Well, there's an email address on on the letter too, that you probably use the.
You definitely can.
Two Band Boosters, that one. So where are you at on your goal?
So we needed a little over fifty thousand for this whole trip, and we are about six to eight thousand short, depending on what we can manage.
Okay. I just didn't, I was wondering if we could, if there were some advertising dollars we could use somehow. Recplex?
If it does help at all, we include it in the letter, but I'm happy to go through it. Each time we take a trip or do something fun, he designs a shirt for us with a logo and a shirt, something the kids can keep.
Sure.
For the event. Um, and we do put all of our donors on the back of that so that they're advertised that way.
And I saw, I saw that.
Yeah.
So I don't know if any of those dollars are available for this sort of thing, or. I I I had the same trepidation when I saw the letter. I'm like,
I do.
You know, it's it's great, but I'm not sure how the city can give a, give money to it directly.
I think I'd get your sentiment, and but administratively, that would be tough. We just don't do those types of things.
Right.
So that that might, if if we're gonna don't, you know, give something of that nature, it'd just be easier to write a check.
Yeah.
So, um, but I I don't think it would be, uh, a bad thing to put it on our social media page. I think we could could try to help promote that through the city's page. For sure, we could do that unless there's objection.
And contact the Chamber of Commerce too. They were just here.
We sent them a letter. I mailed them one.
I think as as a Fultonian, I'm very proud of you guys.
I am too. Especially with all these other things going on.
And knowing that that you know some of our council, I might keep that phone number of yours. We need to talk later.
I do, and I was counting. I think they're all within two years, one way or the other of me, so.
Is that right?
Yep. Yeah, I know, right?
You don't have anything to worry.
Thank you. See, Valerie, we're fine.
You don't have anything to worry about.
We're fine.
And just for those that are listening, so, uh, it's on your flyer, but this, you are a five oh one C three organization, Craig.
We are.
Businesses, personal donations are tax deductible.
And we do send out a letter. Um, we try to do those once a quarter, give or take how busy we are, but we do send out thank you and acknowledgement letters so that you have those for your taxes with our five oh one C three number on there.
The only other thing I would add is when you get that information to our city clerk Kathy Ratliff, we can also get you in touch with our Public Information Officer, Michael Shine, and if you guys are to share some of this information on your Facebook page, and I'm sure you already have, we could reshare that information. It sounds like your support for that, so, yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
All right, great. Thank you.
All right, very good. That's exciting. All right, next up, we have, uh, Louis Bate has submitted a request for permission to uh, deviate from the two-way parking requirement in Willow Creek subdivision uh, with the offer to cover all of the streets in the future phases. All houses and duplexes would be placed back at least forty feet from the back of the curb to accommodate parking for du- two vehicles deep in the driveways. It seems like they're they're trying, they're in in working with us, um, to try to to try to accommodate us as best they can and make this project go forward.
That's right, Mayor. Kyle Brimmer, City Engineer. I'd like to introduce Bart Corman with Louis and Batey.
Thank you, Cal. Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I was here about a month ago, asking asking for just a straight deviation to for a twenty-eight foot wide street, which is two foot wider than than the streets that we have in Willow Creek, and it was planned to extend in through the next phase because of the, because of the ordinance change. Uh, I've talked with Joe's, Joel Ellsworth with Ellsworth Construction LLC. We we made this counterpoint to, or offer, I guess, to to go to thirty foot wide, which is four foot wider than existing, two foot wider than than code, still allow two-way traffic, one-sided parking. In addition to that, we would also make sure that the houses sit back forty feet from the back of the curb. So you could put two vehicles in that driveway. So that would eliminate some of the need for street parking by having more parking off the street. And so I think that addresses a lot of the concerns without without putting a a lot larger s- street through the requirement, especially on a development that had been started in twenty seventeen. And so that's, that's what I'm prepared to offer as a negotiation or or what so that we can, we can go back to planning and zoning and proceed and come back to you guys here in a, in a few months or whatever it takes, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to start the discussion with a motion. I make a motion that we accept the deviation from our current ordinance to allow a strid- street width of thirty feet on all streets for the next phase of the Willow Creek subdivision, parking on one side only, and with the concession that all houses and duplexes will be set back a minimum of forty feet from the back of the curb to allow parking of two vehicles deep in each of the driveways.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, did you get that?
I did.
And I think that sounds perfect, um, from the, from the intent here to me, so. That said, is there, is there any dis, you know, concern about this? Is this more in line you, do you guys think? I mean, I I feel that that's a a good compromise.
Mr. Mayor, the math that I just want to share is that, you know, our intent was that any new subdivision would have the wider streets to allow the two-sided parking. And and that just develops the area more. It provides more opportunity for those those new homeowners or those renters or any of that. Uh, but that aside from the street, a thirty-foot street with parking on one side is going to give you the same or or almost within, you know, six inches of the same clearance as a thirty-six-foot street does with parking on both sides. So I I believe we're getting the clearance that we're needing and we're asking for in the change of the ordinance, but also recognizing the opportunity that we have with this subdivision.
And and I think it completely, uh, falls in the purview of the intent of the ordinance. The way it was changed and written into law is to give you all the opportunity to deviate when it makes sense. And and if you don't do it now, then why would you ever do it? You know, why would you even have that in the in the ordinance? So, um, yeah, I think.
I actually really appreciate the fact that you're willing to negotiate with us. You know, last time it was kind of one of those, either it's our way or the highway, and unfortunately, that was voted down. So I appreciate your willingness to not only recognize, you know, that we're trying to keep our citizens and our children and everybody safe, but also to do that forty-foot setback. So not only are you willing to do a little bit wider street, you're also willing to do the setback, so I I appreciate this, and I I I appreciate this offer, so.
I can support this. The only thing I'm concerned about is the precedent it's setting, because forty-foot setback is quite a bit. I I think, uh, in my own subdivision, the requirement is thirty, may be mistaken. But it's been a while since I've looked at that, but it, you know, forty foot's quite a bit. The other thing is, I'm concerned about the the one-sided parking because we have a lot of streets in town, and we've seen some of the measurements that are thirty feet. So are we gonna start going through and making everything one-sided parking? What's our plan? That's, that's the kind of concern I have. I'd rather leave it to both-sided parking unless it gets out of hand, and then we had to take action because someone may have visitors. I mean, if it's a regular thing and people are parking on both sides, then that's a problem. But if it's, you know, people have an event, you know, small get-together, whatever, family, Christmas, whatever, and they have parking on both sides, that can probably be handled. But I know in Westwood, South Winds, Tanglewood, those are all comparable sides sized streets, and I'd hate to see us go through and say, okay, we're only gonna have one side of parking everywhere. That's my concern. So.
Mike, I don't think that's, I think that.
Mike, I don't think that's, I think that we're gonna go back to the original, and I think that was thirty-six, but because of something that happened, and they agreed to it, and all of a sudden, now we, they're gonna ask us. But I, I agree, and I was trying to get this to pass last time, but, uh, but anyway, uh, I like what they did. Forty, the forty feet, as you said, that means, I was sharing with Alan, that means your backyard's gonna be smaller. So.
That's definitely added cost on the contractor's side, so.
It is.
That, that's not gone unnoticed, so we appreciate that. All right. Any other discussion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have council concerns. Anyone wishing to discuss, uh, discuss matters or concerns, not on the agenda. Uh, council liaisons to city boards and commissions will also provide a brief review of their most recent meeting, and starting with Councilman West.
All righty, uh, we have not met. The planning and zoning commission has not met since the last, uh, council meeting. There is one scheduled on March the twenty-second, or at least we're trying to get it scheduled. Um, so, and I have no concerns at this time.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Seibacher.
Sorry, I was helping Mary with her microphone, and then mine didn't work. We have not had a park board meeting, and I do not have any concerns.
All righty, very good. Councilwoman Reclu?
Yes, um, the Traffic Commission, we had a meeting yesterday. It was a nice, long meeting. I'm learning along. I like it. Actually, the Second Street, uh, project that we're, uh, the, is being done, uh, will be starting March the first with the bridge. We already put notice out and whatever. So, um, it'll take about, about three months for them to complete the whole thing approximately. Uh, so that's, uh, something that we need to prepare for and let people know. Uh, this is fifty-four, the continuance of fifty-four that, uh, where they're gonna say sidewalks and so on on south there, is, um, a project that's, we've got, they're, they're trying to fix it so that there's not gonna cause a lot of traffic problems by jumping in and doing that and still trying to do the bridge. So that probably won't start till about June, and it'll probably take three or four months for, for that to be done too. That modus. The wall on Ravine, Second Street there, where we've had a problem with pulling out of, in the traffic and all, um, that is gonna be, is being repaired. That is an in-house thing being done. And, um, it'll be handled, like I say, by us, and, um, I'm not sure exactly when, but as soon, well, we're already in the process of starting that.
I think there's an easement that has to be taken care of.
Exactly, with Westlake and whatever, but yes. And then, um, we did, uh, we're gonna get some rapid, they call rapid, flashing little things that's, that sit around. They have them in the college towns, and they have them in Columbia and whatever. And, um, they're kind of mid-crossing things, 'cause if, if you, Bartley, you look at Bartley as an example. Just north of, or north of Bartley, in Bartley, there's a crossing, and the crossing this way, and, uh, they take care of it pretty good. They have people that, you know, volunteer to help the, the kids and all, but these are rapid flashing things. I think you've seen them in some of these. We're gonna have some of those, and they will be placed, and that's an example of where they would be placed, and some in the college too for the crossing. Let's see, um, no parking on Thirteenth Street. Where the stables are, and then you go on Thirteenth Street, there's been a problem getting in and out of the stables with the big, larger trucks and things coming in. They've been parking on there, on one side, and, um, they're going to, to change that to no parking in that, on that street there. If there would be interest, something happened, the stables, a fire or something, to get, with people parked on both sides, college kids parked on both sides, you cannot turn that corner and get in there safely. So, um, we're going to change that to no parking on both sides. There is a fire extinguisher there, and a fire unit there and everything, so that's all, uh, taken care of, but, uh, for safety reasons, uh, for the kids who parked here, students who parked there, and, uh, and the, the stables, it needs to be done. Um, let's see, uh, the overlay for our twenty-twenty-three pavement, haven't had the list yet. Uh, Kyle's had two or three guys out, a few guys out, making the list and going through the roads and so on. And, uh, if he wants to talk a little bit about that, uh, it was a very successful meeting, and I appreciate everyone's help with it. So it's up to Kyle.
Before Kyle gets up, Mary. The only concern that I have on that is that most, on that Thirteenth Street, I can see where, uh, there's only part, usually there's only parking on one side, and it's usually the trailers of horses and, and those kind. But I, I can see where you can have a cutoff, uh, where they can, they can't park from here to the corner, something like that. But they, they need that parking, uh, for those trailers and, uh, for the horses, you know, the trailers, uh, when they, when they, when they have competition or things like that. So I don't know. It was just, I just know that they need that.
Okay.
Yeah, quick, just quickly on that one, the, the south side, uh, Thirteenth Street and, uh, kind of the north, uh, west side of Monroe is, is that, is what's being discussed. And so the other side would still be allowed parking where it's not, where it's not already, so. Yes, we are, I am a little bit, li- little bit behind on getting my, uh, asphalt and pavement preservation list together, but, uh, we, uh, the street department, I have three different groups go and separately rate all the, uh, diff- all the, all of our streets in town. There's a rating one through ten, and they follow a guideline on how to, how to rate the roads. So, that away, um, you know, it's not just, it's not just, uh, roads that we pick out of the sky, because, you know, our, our buddy lives on that road, you know, they're, they're, they're rated separately, and, and anything that, uh, anything that's, that's, I flag anything that, that has an odd rating between the three, you know, to go back out and re-rate, um, just to make sure that, you know, hey, I was, I was struggling that day. And, uh, so, it, it's basically a, a, a rating method that we're trying to, trying to, that we have used in the past. We did this the last time, uh, about three and a half years ago. We're re-upping that rating just because, you know, our pavements age, and we need to do it again. Uh, we usually do it about three, every three years. So that away, if, if, um, Valerie called in and said, why, why aren't you doing my road, I can pull up her rating, uh, along with, um, what the traffic volume potentially is of that road and, and what the circumstances is of that road, and then I can have, we can have a discussion versus, well, it just wasn't picked, so. So we're, we're finalized with the, that rating process, and, and, uh, we are making, uh, trying to whittle that information down into the roads that we do this year, that, which you guys will see. If there's any questions, I can field those.
Talk about the flashing crosswalks, Scott. Is that still a twenty-twenty-four concept?
Yes.
All right, thanks for the update on that. Um, any concerns, Councilwoman Reclu? Okay, thank you. All right, Councilman Stone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there has not been a meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission. The next one is scheduled for March twenty-first. And so it will not be until, there won't be a report until the second council meeting in the month of March for that. The commission is also discussing a different meeting time to accommodate my new work schedule, but if there is any other council member that's interested in joining that commission, just let me know. Uh, they meet on the, I believe it's the third Tuesdays at one P M. here at City Hall. I am very happy to continue to serve and wish to continue to serve. I'm just not able to meet that particular time on that particular day of the week. But we're, we're still working that through. That decision's not been made yet. And then the only cons- I don't have any concerns. I just have lots of thank yous, and it's, it's probably gonna sound like the Kyle Show, but, um, I have a, a thank you to Kyle. He helped out. We had a constituent that had some concerns with some semi-trucks coming up and down his small street, um, over by one of our more industrial, uh, businesses, and he was able to work with that constituent and pass on that information to the business. And also, I wanna, I wanna thank the work that's being done and the, the actions that are being taken on the wall at Second Street and Ravine. And I know a lot of that came out of Kyle's department in working with the, the, the landowner and the easement, and then, and I appreciate the city looking at the additional cost that it's gonna take to, to modify that wall to meet that safety concern with the folks that have brought that up in my ward. Um, along with the Second Street Bridge, uh, renovation that's being done, I know that Kyle and Renee have both reached out to many of the businesses along Second Street and in that area to discuss with them the, the traffic impact and any type of, of other impact that it's gonna have. And so I appreciate Renee and Kyle and anybody else on the city staff that's been working with those local businesses. And then we, I had a family member that had a personal issue this morning and needed to contact the sewer department to check on something, and their response was within an hour to that location, to that residence, and was a great partner with, um, the plumbers that we already had there, as well as the homeowner. So a huge thank you and responsiveness to that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Stone. We were moving along so good.
You asked us to talk.
Uh, next, Councilman Luther.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There has been no airport advisory board meeting since our last council meeting. Uh, no concerns at this time. Uh, just, uh, again, to show appreciation. Uh, really just throughout tonight, uh, I mean, I know sometimes we come out of these council meetings tired and sometimes wondering where our purpose is, but, you know, starting with the, the proclamation of recognizing Black History Month, um, as well as the revitalized teamwork with the chamber, and then also, uh, you know, working with our partner Louis and Beatty. This definitely feels like a, an exciting time, and that, uh, we are really commu- connect, connecting with our community and making some positive changes. So I appreciate the effort. Bye, everybody.
That's what it's all about. Thank you, Brad. All right, next, Councilman Combs.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Human Rights Commission has not met since our last meeting. So outside that, I don't really have any concerns. I did just want to bring up, uh, just as awareness, I guess, um, that Renee was selected to be the keynote speaker for the, uh, Fulton NAACP's Annual Heritage Celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King, uh, Jr. last Sunday. And I wasn't aware of it, just not knowing, paying attention, I guess, to what's going on. Um, so I just thought I'd toss that out in case anybody else wanted to know that they missed that.
Absolutely. I heard she got a standing ovation, so.
She did.
I was not able to get there either, but, uh, yep, thank you. All right, Councilman Washington.
Thanks at this time, and as I, I was, uh, glad to see some of the council members, uh, at the NAACP Black History Month. As he, Alan was saying, that, uh, Renee spoke and, and did well, and, and so it had a great turnout, even some former chief was there and, and others that were there too, and, uh, Ludwig and some of his officers. And so it was a great, uh, great outing.
Thank you. And, uh, last but not least, Councilwoman Nelson.
Um, Utility Board did not meet this month. They are on a trip. Um, Renee and Daryl are both out right now, um, so we did not have a meeting, and we'll, there will not be another update until the last council meeting in March. Um, I don't have any concerns, but I do wanna say thank you for the signs for the Second Street Bridge project. I know that we've, several people have said things, but every morning when I drive down the street, I think, oh, I need to stop doing this come March sixth, because I'm not gonna be able to get here. So I appreciate the notification early. Thank you for that, Kyle. It's the Kyle Show tonight. And no, no concerns.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Um, for myself, uh, I would mention that we have in your packet or at your, uh, in front of you tonight, our city clerk had, uh, caught something that we're kind of been doing a little bit wrong. But it, it's in regards to, uh, tabling an item versus postponing an item, and we come across that instance quite a bit. So there's, uh, a few paragraphs on the backside of that that I would ask y'all to read, and if you wanna paraphrase, uh, Kathy Fores, what?
Sure, um, thank you. Uh, fresh eyes, um, brings a lot of light to things, and postponing an item versus tabling an item. The difference is a table, tabling an item is, it allows you to interrupt the meeting to, uh, give, you, you know, um, give way to something more pressing. If we had a guest speaker or something, we could take, uh, for example, the, uh, parade request and move it off the table at that point, or move it off the agenda, and hold it so that we could let Louis Bate speak, the representative from there. And where postponing means that you definitely want that brought up again at another meeting to address the subject. Table means to bring it back, and you're just going to put it away for a minute or so, and then address it again at the council meeting you're generally at. So finding that, I thought that was pretty interesting. I had not heard anyone use the term postpone, and, um, I've really been looking into it, and I appreciate you, um, allowing me to discuss that with you and share with you.
As always, if the intent's there, I think we're always okay, uh, but, uh, to have that, um, done the, the right way, I think would be great. But just when you see that maybe being done a different way, that's why, um, and again, I would encourage you to read that, uh, Rules of Order. I've, I've never, I'll be honest with you, I've never read Robert's Rules of Order from cover to cover. But there's a lot to that.
I'm a self-admitted nerd. It's okay.
Yeah, so there's a lot there, but.
It, it actually brought, I was reading our adopted rules and procedures, and that's where I noticed the word postpone, and that's when I started looking in to the definition of it.
Yep.
Based on council meetings.
So.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I did have one quick question on that, Mr. Uh, if we, if we postpone an item, do we need to state when we postpone it, when we want it put back on the agenda, or is it assumed that it's gonna be on the next agenda?
You want to postpone with a definite time, whether it's at the next regularly scheduled council meeting or at the next council meeting following the event, that you wanna discuss and, or maybe follow up to. You definitely need a definite time.
And then does that simply put it on the agenda again at that time?
It does.
Or in the past, we've used, I wanna, we have to motion to take it off the table to discuss. We won't have to do that anymore with postponing.
You won't have to. That's correct. If we do table an item, let's say, for example, a piece of new business, we do have to take that back off the table. Either at that meeting or the next council session. If we don't do it by the next meeting, it just falls off and it's done. It has to go through the whole agenda process again.
And the tabling still is a formal process of a motion, a second, and a vote to untable and untable.
That's correct, and then it brings back the main motion to be discussed. Yes.
Okay.
And if you postpone something indefinitely, you just kind of kill it. It's, it's a nice way for you not to have to vote.
Yeah, and, and thinking about this, um, I don't foresee us tabling a lot of things.
I don't, I didn't either.
Because rarely do we wanna just push it off during that same meeting.
Correct.
But, yep, it could happen. I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but we have someone that's, we're waiting to get an answer from or something like that. We could table it until we get a response or some kind of information.
If, and if you table a motion, you have to bring it up in the same class of business. So if you, you table during a, a new business item, it has to be brought up in new business while you're still there or at the next council session in, in that matter also.
Oh, so you couldn't even skip to resolutions and then come back to it if it's tabled?
At that agenda, right, that's correct. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see us ever using table then.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And I think that's in reference, I'm sorry, now you started me. I gave you a letter. Um, that's in reference to, for example, Saint Charles County that has, or Saint Charles City, that might have sixty to seventy items on one form of business, like maybe resolutions for the night, or, and then the same number for ordinances, and I think that's where they get that, in that timeframe, where you can come back. Ours is kind of short, so.
Yeah. All right, very good. Um, and I, I don't have anything else, um, tonight. Uh, we'll start right into resolutions. Councilman Luther, if you would present Resolution thirty-four seventy-five.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number thirty-four seventy-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to execute a contract with the Christensen Construction Company of Kingdom City, Missouri, for the twenty-twenty-three South Business. for the 2023 South Business 54 Highway Improvement, City of Fulton 21-7, Project Number TAP 270510, for the following bidding price of $362,513, and to sign all necessary documents in relation to said contract. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3475 at this council meeting.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. And this is in relation to the sidewalk widening 54 at that, that stretch of road and adding sidewalks. And it's done in, in different pieces here. We're going to have two, we're going to have another resolution right after this, but it's all about the same thing. In the, the bid sheet that we got for the 927,000, very competitive bid, I thought. Christensen won that. But, but both resolutions are encompassed in that 927. Is that right? Yeah, okay. Very good. And that, that is slated to start this summer? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Are there any concerns or questions on that? All right, all, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? And next up, Councilman Washington, if you would present 3476.
Resolution Number 3476, a resolution authorizing the mayor on the behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to execute a contract with Christensen Construction Company of Kingdom City, Missouri, for the 2023 South Business 54 Highway Improvement, COF 21-07, Project Number, Number MO.J5S3591, for the following bid price of $564,618.61, and to sign all necessary documents in the relationship to, to, relationship to say contract. I move that we accept Resolution 3476 at tonight's council meeting.
Very good. And that number is $564,618.61. All right, any questions or concerns on that? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? All right. Next up, that woman Nelson, if you would present Resolution 3477.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 3477, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the fiscal year 2022, staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, safer grant, funding opportunity number DHS-22-GPD-083-00-993. Make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 3477 at tonight's council meeting.
Very good. We have a motion and a second, Chief Kofelt.
Yes, good evening. Kevin Kofelt, Fire Chief. This is a Department of Homeland, Homeland Security Grant. It's a federal grant. We had this grant in 2006. We were able to add three personnel to our roster. This time, we're going for, we'd like to go for six personnel to be fully funded for three years, benefits, salaries. Then after the third year, we'll have to budget in for the funding, for them salaries and benefits after the, on the fourth year. This will allow us to add another person on our truck instead of having two people. We'll have three people responding, have six people minimum manning. It's a lot of stuff you can, a lot more stuff you can do with six personnel when you're arriving on scene. And you'll have two people outside when two people are inside. That's, it's a big safety concern.
I have questions.
Sure.
How did you get to six? For your request? Is that like a maximum or?
That's the number we'll need to go to a six-man minimum on duty at all times.
Okay. Is that something that you've tried in the past? You said in '06, you've got this for three personnel? Was, did you try for six? And I'm, I just don't know how the grant works, like how do they decide?
We were only allowed to go for three in 2006. And we were fortunate, fortunate to get that.
I think it's awesome. I really do.
And Chief, would this have any impact on our safety rating?
Yes, we just received ISO rating, and we were just a couple points away from going to a three from a four. And they hit us pretty good on manpower. I think if we increase this and do a few other things that we're working on that, that we've seen that was our weakness, I think we can definitely go to a three next inspection. And that, that will be five years from now.
And that affects everybody's insurance.
Yes, it's insurance office, it, the, insurance companies give you better rates if you have a lower class.
That's.
It's a class from one to 10, and we're setting at a four right now. We'd like to go to a three.
Let me repeat the question because I didn't have the microphone on. That affects everybody's insurance rate, rates, everybody's resident, business, all that sort of thing, correct?
Yes, it, yes, it does. And, you know, businesses that are looking to come into town, they look at that rating as well.
Sure. It's a big expense for them.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Chief, you said that after three years, we're going to assume, to put in our budget for those three additional, and six, six additional. How much money are we looking at in after three years to add those, those six? Will they come in at bait, at a certain pay? Or because they've been here three years, they will be on a higher salary or?
Well, they'll start in on basic firefighter salary. And then as they, you know, they will get raises in those three years. And well, I mean, there'll be a, I'm not, I can't give you a direct amount, how much it's going to be, but it's, with salary and benefits, I'm thinking somewhere around $50,000 firefighter, in that range. But that's, that's just throwing some numbers out, I'm not for sure.
When we apply for this grant, Kevin, do we have to submit a specific amount? Do we say we need $200,000 and they grant us that amount? Or how does that work exactly?
We tell them how many personnel we'd like to add, and then we give them the numbers that's going to cost, and then they fund that for three years each year. The, if there's an increase in salaries, they'll, they'll match that and they'll pay it 100%.
The other thing I would point out as well is, as Kevin said, we're, we're hoping to get six, but obviously it would be up to the agency to decide if six will be granted. So all six is what we would, would appreciate to get to, to reach that minimum staffing and, and certainly provide a safer community and a safer situation for our fire department. We're kind of at the mercy of, of what they actually decide to award.
Right, yes. They, they could come back and give us three.
Did they, did we ask for six prior, Kevin, and they came back at three at that point?
No, we asked for three and we received three.
What's the amount of years that we have to keep those staff on duty after the three that's paid for? Did they give us a set amount of years that we have to?
There is no set amount of years, and if we don't keep up, it's not mandatory that we fund them on the fourth year, but if we don't, it's, it's not going to help our chances of getting another federal grant in the future.
Very good. Does anyone have any other questions on that?
Well, a question on the federal grant, so can this be applied to current staffing? Or can this be applied after three years? Can this grant be applied to our current?
Sorry, I'm not understanding what you're.
So the grant runs out in three years and we've got to pull away. So can this grant be applied for again in three years? Can that be just put back towards our current?
There would be a limited chance that we would be able to apply after those three years and get funded again. There's a lot of different fire departments out there that are going for this grant as well, so.
And then you're going to just put first, first crew, uh, to attack crew back.
Right. Right now, we're, we're responding, some days we're responding with four personnel minimum manning. And we arrive on scene, we send two people in the house to fight the fire, then we have a truck operator, and then that leaves one person on the outside. You know, that person's getting equipment out, and so we just don't have any backup when we arrive with four. And these days, a lot of our combustibles are burning a lot hotter, a lot faster. It's more dangerous these, these days.
And our mud master is draining, was that?
Backup crew that was sitting there with a charged hose line ready in case your attack crew ran into any kind of. Yep, two in, two out. Yes. Definitely understand the safety impact there. Yeah, the two in, two out, that's an OSHA policy, and we try to follow that policy. You know, if, if there's known life inside a structure, we won't follow that policy. We'll go on in and take our chances there.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yep. We definitely wish you well. Is there any other questions or concerns on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our last resolution tonight, Councilwoman Reclu, if you would present 3478.
A Resolution Number 3478, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to designate Renee Tyler, Director of Administration, as the interim Building Commissioner of the City of Fulton in accordance with RSMO Section 67410 and Fulton City Code Section 46-5. Make a motion for Resolution 3478 for final approval at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And this is something that our counselor Riley advised, that we appoint this interim building commissioner, particularly for upcoming court appearance that we have. We really need to have that set in stone, who that person is. I don't think this is the permanent, long-term solution or person to, to be in this role, but I don't know if anyone wants, Courtney, would you care to?
I would just clarify. Now I'll clarify, I apologize. I would just clarify that it's actually in relation to a, a hearing that we're going to have coming up here relatively soon. And so as you stated, Mayor, Councilor Riley stated that we do need to have an appointed interim building commissioner in order to meet the statutory and code requirement for that upcoming hearing. So not necessarily court-related, but it is a legal proceeding, just point of clarification.
I do have a question on that, and I know I emailed a little bit about this, but is there a reason why the people that absorb this position aren't, aren't our building commissioner? Because is there a reason why they haven't already been appointed to that position if they absorbed the?
Yeah, and actually, Kyle, I'll probably have you come up and, and back up on this as well. So I know the, the individuals who were appointed to handle some of the aspects of the previous Planning and Protective Services Director's position. One is acting as kind of the main point of contact for code enforcement, and the other person is acting as the building inspector. So the building commissioner in a hearing setting has to oversee the hearing process, and that building commissioner has to also oversee that the code enforcement officer and the building official has done their, their proceedings appropriately. So both the building inspector and the code enforcement officer have to present testimony that, that is then heard by the building commissioner and a determination is made. If you have anything else to add.
Kyle Brimmer, City Engineer. Yes, Courtney covered that pretty well. Per our codes, the building commissioner is really appointing the duties that is required of the building inspector and code enforcer. So like I said, presently, my office is, is carrying those duties out. So if we see a dangerous building, for example, and think that, that, or it's pointed out to us, we, then, then we go inspect it. Then at that point, we would issue a letter out, we would, the required response time would be given. If that, if nothing gets carried out within that response time, then at that point, we would, we would consult with Renee, and then Renee would say, okay, we need, we, we need to contact this person, maybe try again. Okay, if we try it again, then a hearing could be set. Or if it's a, if it's a bigger building that we need some professional services, then she could author, authorize those professionals. Hey, you know, I could say to her, hey, this is a little bit out of our league. Can you, can you authorize the expenditure to get a structural engineer to come take a look at something? So the building commissioner is kind of the overseer of the duties that are required, and the duties are now dumped on me, so.
I think just the, the part that's, that question is the interim piece of that.
Sorry, the, sort of the, the piece that's a little questioning is the interim part is, but, but yeah, I mean, I see the need there, at least for now, to do that, and it's.
So we be appointing somebody in the future permanently? I mean, I'm assuming that this is something.
That's what you would assume, yeah.
We would have to have, so is that person Kyle? Or is that person, who, who is that person? Because, I mean, obviously, we don't want Renee to have to do this forever. You know, that's taking away from her other duties. It's giving her more responsibility on things that she, you know, doesn't necessarily need to do. So my concern is, is who is that person? And if we're absorbing that in Kyle's department, is that Kyle?
What credentials do they need too, also? That's what I was concerned about.
I think that's a valid concern, and, sorry, Mary, I think that's a valid concern as far as the interim piece, and I'll be honest with you, I would need to look into that and get you a more definite answer. As far as the interim piece, the way that I'm seeing it now, this is in response to the fact that that, that position has been vacated, and we have to have someone in place for the specific hearing. But I will not pretend to have an answer for you as far as how long that interim period will be, or if that will be later on absorbed or reallocated to different staff. I think that's a very valid question.
So in the past, it's been our code enforcement officer, Dennis, and most recent Dennis Houchens. He was the building commissioner? Okay.
Yes.
Never, never heard him called that, so that's quite kind of different for clarification. Thank you.
And I'd like to clarify too, poor choice, poor choice of words toward the end of my, my last response, but you know, the duties are absorbed through the engineering staff and the, and the, the Planning and Protective Services staff that, Casey, that we, that, that we still have. So, you know, it, it's, it's, the requirements and the education that's required to do those inspections are, are things that, that we need to make sure that, that, that we have. And the building commissioner does not necessarily have to have that technical expertise. They just need to make sure that they're employing people that have that technical expertise. And so that's what Renee is, is doing here, and she is ensuring that, that, you know, for myself, I've got a, a professional engineering degree. We have a inspector, a construction inspector that works under me, who has already been doing construction inspection, site inspection. He, in his past, in his past career, he was a firefighter. He also worked in the military and, and was a CB in the military, so he has a, a good background there. and, and was a CB in the military, so he has a good background there. And then Casey Bailey, who's been working for us for a while, she has worked under Dennis, not only doing code enforcement, but has been on numerous building sites, doing buildings inspections and learning under Dennis. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified, because I did use a poor choice of words and didn't clarify that to begin with.
So I actually did a little research on the qualifications. In twenty seventeen, we adopted twenty fifteen International Building Code, IBC, ICC, digital codes. The qualifications for the building official, the building official shall have at least ten years' experience or equivalent as an architect, engineer, inspector, contractor, or superintendent of construction, or any combination of these five years, of which shall be supervisory experience. The building official should be certified as a building official through the Recognized Certification Program. The building official shall be appointed or hired by the applicable governing authority.
Yeah, and it's unfortunate that Renee can't be here tonight to speak for herself. She's on a trip with, doing some professional development right now. But I think in this case, she would say that, again, it goes back to interim, and we have a need for someone to be that representative, so I think she has the support, supportive staff here to assist, so I don't know.
I just want to make sure that all of our bases are covered. Since we did actually adopt that code in our city, I want to make sure that we don't get ourselves in some sort of a pickle if we're putting somebody interim there that isn't qualified for the position. Because I don't know if Renee meets, I don't know if she meets these qualifications, and if she doesn't, if it's an interim position, does it have to meet those qualifications?
I believe Kyle was saying that duty is, he had taken on that duty as an engineer. I'm talking about Kyle.
But he's not the interim, Renee is. That's what this is doing, is this is.
And, you know, building official, because I've read that as well, building official versus building commissioner, I'm not a lawyer, and, you know, but, you know, per our codes, it references building commissioner and building inspector, I believe, underneath that. So, and in those, and in that, I think it's building.
I think it's building official. It's how it's posted here.
And there, which I don't think our, our, of course, we adopted that code, and how our ordinances, how they're defining building official and building commissioner is maybe different. I'm not a lawyer, I, that, I think is where we're splitting hairs here, and I know that Tom Riley looked at the, at our ordinances, and this is what he suggested, so I would assume that, that, you know, he's looked at that, those definitions deeper than I have and have a better understanding, but.
I just want to make sure we're covered.
I think that's the.
I certainly understand that. The thing I would say as well, again, I'd reiterate, I completely understand your question, Councilwoman Nelson. I think it would be appropriate to give Renee an opportunity to explain, you know, that determination, and I think she did forward along an email with some correspondence with Tom and her response to that. So as far as the, I'm speaking strictly on the interim, not necessarily on the qualifications, I think it would be appropriate for her to provide you guys some feedback on how long she anticipates that interim period to be. And then, of course, we can also have Tom take another look at everything. The only other thing I would point out is just, this is being brought on this agenda because we do have a hearing coming up on the seventh, Kyle, on the seventh, which unfortunate, unfortunate timing, as far as, as far as talking about this. But I will definitely get that message to her and ask that she provide you guys some clarification on her anticipation for the interim period and what her plans are with that.
That would be great, thank you.
So in theory, we could approve this tonight, and if we dig into it, we get a response that may not be what we feel is appropriate, we could revoke that, have, we would have to have a special meeting before the seventh to change that decision. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly, as you say, Mayor Cannel, you could enact this ordinance, I'm sorry, this resolution tonight, and should you all determine that that's not the appropriate course of action, there would be a new resolution at an emergency or a special meeting prior to that hearing where you would appoint a different personnel.
I feel like if our city councilors looked at it and has made this recommendation, it's probably on the up and up and meets it, but I understand there's questions, and I, you know, I don't, I don't purport to know those answers at all, but I trust Tom's judgment on this.
Not that we'd love to call special meetings, but I think this rises to that level. If we had to do that, we would, we would all be willing to do that, probably. And I felt comfortable until you read what you read, Lauren, so thank you for bringing that to light, and we'll hear from Renee, I'm sure, on it. That being said, are there any other questions or discussion on that tonight? I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? Very good. Before we move on to ordinances, we need a little break here, just a quick five-minute break, please, and we'll be right back. Just a quick five-minute break, please, and we'll be right back.